Minutes. All right. Let's call the meeting order, please. Steve knows where the in or cannot both excuse Danielle Black will be seated. Um, consideration of the meeting minutes.
Mark. Use two.
Okay.
Mark two.
Oh, Tuesday, Mark. Right. Meeting minutes for March twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Jane, we have anything?
Yeah, a couple. Let's find them.
I see. That's what I needed to do is find it.
Um, let's. We're there. One of them was, um, uh, listen, line three eighty-eight.
How does it arrive?
Was right there in the airport a long time.
Okay.
Three eighty-eight, which is member board and plan. That the master plan in the written document as well as plan is the written. Documentation as well as land rocks.
Oh.
Isn't so in. The, um.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Uh, number line four ninety.
Well, line with that again.
Four ninety.
Oh, yeah.
It's, uh, you know, the approval stands today that has one thousand eighteen and the number is one thousand twenty-eight.
Which one is it?
One thousand eighteen.
Eighteen. And while we're right there.
What's that?
I said while we're on that page.
Oh, boy, yeah.
Uh, line five forty-seven, second to the next page, but. Um, that word access should be assess, A S S E S S. Okay, go ahead, Paul.
Yep. And then. Uh, number nine hundred. Um. Okay, page twenty-three. Mr. Perugian explained that they are expecting the tank to be. Complete by the time fires, like Congress are completed. I think he said that. When I rewatched it, he, he said that they would be, that the tank would be. Um. Completed before the, uh, units started, he expected to have all the infrastructure done. And then he said before the units get started, they were going to be.
And before they were started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He said they're gonna put it in infrastructure and. And then before they started the units, he thought that they, he, he said, I, I expect that tank will be. Started by then.
Well, he didn't make a promise not to start though until the tank was, that's.
No, I know that, but that's what that, I understand that, that's what he was. He was saying that, I just want to admit that when I went back and looked at it.
Means that your recollection too that he didn't.
I don't recall exactly what he said about the tent, but I remember that he was saying that all the infrastructure.
Right, he did that first.
Yeah, I went back and looked at it.
Did it? So Mr. goes and explains that they're starting the tank to be completed before. Uh, the units, the fires, like condos are started.
Right. If he was done, right. And then page twenty-three. Uh, excuse me, twenty-five. Line one thousand. The conditions subject to the approval site plan number four. Additional state and town regulations that are required on approvals. I went back and looked at it as well, so. That's all that's all I have.
Okay.
All right, I have a couple more.
Okay.
On that same page, since we're there, nine seventy-nine.
Yep.
Um. Of, often the block, as if it was, they've considered incorporating one thousand gallon tanks instead of seventy-five gallon tanks. I think he was talking about five hundred gallon underground tanks. Not seventy-five gallons.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's what I.
I, they don't even make seventy-five gallon underground tanks, so.
No, they, they put in, they, I think they were putting in five hundred, something about a thousand to reduce the impact.
Right.
Okay, so five hundred gallons, alright.
All right, go back one more page, then twenty-three. I don't know what you mean. This is supposed to say, but it doesn't make sense.
What number?
Starting on line nine twenty-four says. Mister was Ocho notes that they don't have a final landscaping lighting plan as they thought it was what in public street. Requirement, should that say they thought it was not? A public street requirement? I don't know what that.
Yeah, I don't know what that means either, I, I didn't look at that, you're.
Could be any public streets in this, it doesn't even. Makes, maybe even private, maybe even private.
Can we just say they don't have a final landscaping and lighting plan period?
Period.
Yeah, that's.
I would agree with that. Yeah.
All right.
But they. They do have a. They have intended on using that. We both, the lady called Blue Sky Dark Night.
Down like.
Yeah, the dark some of those things.
That was called dark sky.
Yeah. I mean, that was a condition, conditionator approval, yeah.
Right. There we go, yeah.
Down like. Maybe right down in there.
Yeah. The dark sky.
I mean, did you use dark sky, that incorporates?
Pretty much everything.
All right. It's down to official dark.
Okay, so dark sky lighting.
Yeah, I remember, of course.
Um.
They use that term with they, I think it was the Hampton Inn. I've heard it before, I don't know what it exactly means, but it sounds.
And we changed.
Well, they have like a chart and it, and it talked about.
Is that?
What that. Yes, right. Out of each light.
Right.
So they have the lumens, they have little tiny numbers. But the lumens were gonna be at the perimeter.
Oh, the square footage, I give you the square footage and a little. Luminous, have the square footage, I think.
Yeah, we had them all changed out and included with the LED.
Or, essentially, like. Like. Anyone have anything else? Okay. One more line, three eighty-three.
Three eighty-three.
And we get there. Okay.
Says what? Plans is for those, it should be what plans are for those.
Are for those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Does anyone have anything else? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three?
Go on, man.
I'm sorry, you know, made a motion, all second, all in favor, I, I, more opposed, tensions, great.
Well, we're gonna appoint Danielle to see.
I already did, Mooney.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I was only conceptual anyway. All right, Mark Stiles.
Yep, Mark is here, uh, when someone else is running.
Hi. I'm back. How is everybody?
Yeah.
Um, Carol, I read your message about sending, uh, plans, I apologize, uh, for those who don't.
So. This is.
Have a magnifying glass.
This is only conceptual, so it's not binding on how funny the body.
Right.
But.
Can, can I share a screen instead to, uh, make it, I can zoom in and such?
I don't know how to do that, you know how to do that?
I do. So, if you recall, can anybody see that?
Yeah, there we go, here we go.
This is what was approved, um, and then extended. Um. For a thousand reasons, I don't love this project at all, um. And I don't intend on ever doing that project, so let me. Show you what I am thinking, so this is. This is the plan by our site. Civil engineers and surveyors and. By zoom in, you'll see. Maple Street, right? And then one fifty-five. The intent of this new project is.
We can't.
Start it off.
Okay, let me, let me, uh. Let me reshare again, hang on. Now, do you see it?
No, no.
Yes.
Now it is.
Now you see it, now you don't, okay, so now we see it here, so this is one fifty-five. Next to Maple, right, so Maple Subway's over here to the right. Entryway here with parking. Um, ultimately. Nothing's gonna happen to one fifty-five. We're gonna leave that intact, but what we do wanna do. Um, and I wanna talk with you all about this. Is this is a line of bushes right here. We're gonna take those bushes out and push this parking down closer to the stairs that exist right here, going up to the. The residential unit above. And then we're gonna enter through Maple Streets to the office, back office. Door here, that is normally a sidewalk here, comes in here. I'm hoping what that will do is actually give us more parking, but I haven't asked the site folks to. To do that yet on the CAD drawing.
Do you need more?
I don't think so, actually. But that's what I got.
The only reason, the only reason I ask is because. You're taking out some space, it could be green space. That.
Yeah, I think you're gonna like this, um. This concept with the green space.
Okay.
So, um, again, zero green space on what was approved, but again, throwing that into the circular file, as they say. Um, moving over to one fifty-three. You're gonna see the red outline is the existing building. The hatched outline is the footprint of what we wanna build, so you'll see it's significantly smaller. Than what is actually there now, the yellow building at one fifty-three with the. Um, the bulkhead is right here, all of this goes away to a new proposed building, so. For green space. We get to knock down that nasty wall and open up all of this middle area as. A form of a courtyard in between the two properties. The goal. So let me go to. Well, let me just focus on this for a second, so then you've got. Um. Main Street, State Road one twelve, right? What we would like to do. Is we thought about building the structure out to where. Um. The footprint was. But what we wanna do instead is leave this open pad here. Right, and we might push the whole building back. Depending on, uh, what you all say here tonight, but there is room to actually push this structure back. And we wanna leave an open pad for a food truck right here. We have a curb cut right here in between the two. And we wanna be able to pull in and pull out. And have various different, um. Food trucks come in, so.
Well, you have any outside seating for the food truck?
Um. In the courtyard, I plan to have Adirondacks and a very casual, no assigned seating kind of option. No tables, simply Adirondacks and a, and a cozy kind of bench atmosphere, maybe a. Chairlift or something like that. Having that food truck here and then having. A commercial. Fixed unit here. In the middle and then here on the first floor, all. Looking into this open vast courtyard, maybe with a fire pit and. Uh, outside light, a little, you know, lights, bulb kind of lighting, very casual feeling. But you'll see here on this line. That's drawn, you see the stairs in the back, this is the ramp because. The access to these small pop-up. Type of, um, retail amenities, if you will. Uh, will have access, but they won't be accessible to go inside, they'll all be walk-ups, okay, so. If you think food truck here changes potentially daily. But then you have similar concepts. In size and scope, but they're affixed, we'll be fixing them to, uh, helical piling. Um, to keep them firm, so what I wanna show you on another plan, if. I may, let me stop, share.
Mark, you're putting six, six units in the new building?
Uh, no, no, let me, uh. Let me show you the actual plans of the.
Right.
The new. So the idea. Oh, that's the, that's the old project, hang on. All right, so here's the new plan, so hopefully this came in pretty well in the. Email and the, um, eight and a half by eleven, so we had our architect. Draft these, I'm gonna try to go down here slow, let's see. Feels like it's jumping the page on me, okay. So what these are is the recycled, um, shipping containers, so the construction will be done off-site. Uh, the helical piles, which is a new, more environmentally. Um, uh, environmentally, uh, sensitive material will drill into the ground and hold instead of having a cement foundation, there won't be basements. So that what the whole structure that's there now. Will be properly raised, um, and graded. To grade, okay, so then what happens is, you remember. Let me go to. Proposed. Front left, you see how there's a deck on the second floor?
Yep.
Right here. The food truck would actually sit underneath that deck. And then come in and come out based on whatever schedule, um, is, is organized for them. The left. Container would be. An eight by twenty. Container, which would be for a single studio residential apartment. So if you go to. Let's see, so then if you go to the proposed rear elevation one here on the bottom right. What you're looking at is, uh, Belacasa real estate view, so if you're at the building. Where the Thai food restaurant is and Belacasa real estate, this is what you'd be looking at, so. This lower left is this unit right here, so this would be a residential. Uh, studio apartment, as would this, okay? Then on top of it would be a one-bedroom residential apartment where we have the stairs going up to it. And then some outdoor space out front. If you go to the other side. Again, top right hand side, you have this open area with the deck overhead, so again, the food truck would roll right into there. And then you have these two spots right here, so again, food truck is, um, fluid. And then this, and I don't think there's gonna be sliders, they, this was done relatively quickly. But this would be, think, um. Sandwich shop, coffee shop, something very small, walk-up ice cream shop, I'm not sure what that would be. And then this one is more likely than not, hopefully, going to be. Um, a, an office. So with connection back to the one at one fifty-five, so these would be private offices for one fifty-five. Okay? And then you go up the stairs and this is the other forty footer. Uh, forty foot by eight feet and you have, this one's already completed, so this is actually what it would look like. Um, it was built on spec. And if this is approved, then that, that we're gonna be putting it here on the second floor, this way the sliders. Have this outdoor space, looking again, here is the courtyard. Okay? What we're gonna do is we're gonna use, um. As environmentally sound material as possible, you can see we're recycling some of this material already. And we're looking to follow suit with the gentleman or the owner of the property down, uh, by the Nordic Inn and. Put solar panels along the top to hopefully. Make this virtually self-sustaining, we're investigating right now whether or not. Um, there's, uh, tappable water for a well as well, uh, because what we wanna do is, uh, as little impact. On the town as possible, uh, to accomplish what we're doing, how come?
If you, if the town water goes by your property, you have to, and so you have to look onto it. That's, that's a town regulation, Mike, right?
I know, I believe it's state.
Yep, you have, yeah.
It hasn't changed last fifteen years, because other one thousand town have well, then.
Well, they were no gone.
Yeah, but, the town regulation states that if it goes by your house, or, yeah, fifth within a reasonable proximity, you have to look onto it.
You have to, that's for sure, like never said for water.
Well, it says water to.
Because you can still put a well in your property, can't stop you doing that. If you wanna use a nonpartable water, no problem with it. They're the same regulation, they're okay different.
So which regulation is that, that I should be looking at?
Same thing, you could say the same thing about a leach field, so it's the same type. You know?
Technically, I believe you, you're right, that you can put a well in your property. And use it for nonpartable source of, so if you, if you're gonna.
But they're not ready to tell them that well.
I, I'm just saying what the, the regulations say, you could put one in there. But you could use it for, for irrigation or whatever. I don't know if it's.
Drinking.
Town or town and state.
Drinking water regulation, probably.
I think it's a state drinking water regulation, saying if there's town water available. Uh, that's what you have to use.
It's in a town, it's in the town ordinance anyway, Mark, probably wanna look at that.
I will, I will, certainly.
There's some places have well and drill. For the pools.
It seems kinda counterproductive.
And well, and I think with a well, your clearance that you would have to have to other. You have to have a clearance around a well. Well, that five feet. I, I said, huh?
Maybe seven, seventy-five feet.
So, you know, that nothing could be around it, like parking laws or where, where.
Got it.
You know, contaminants to get into you all, so you probably wanna.
Yeah. That makes sense. That makes sense, but we may do it for irrigation if that's available too. Because again, what we're, what we're hoping to do is be as minimally evasive as possible and, and limit the impact, cause I know that there's a lot of things going on up and down that road.
Awful expensive irrigation.
Yeah.
So are these, are, are these? Metal shipping containers that you're going to.
That's right.
You're going to redesign outside? Or you're gonna leave the metal on them and that's why it's.
I, well, we're, we're actually sketching through that right now, I, what I wanna do is have a similar, uh, feel of one fifty-five, but also. Highlighting and honoring, you know, the storage container itself, so probably kind of a combination.
I could just see some of the, of others having some. I mean, we've got a lot of property on Main Street that's. All of my, been put into it architecturally, I mean, you take a look at, just on this side of it, you know, I mean, they, there may. There may be some. Pushback to that.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, that's always.
Just, just, just my, just my first glance comment about it, you know, I mean, I.
Is there, is there something that, um, I'm missing that would make this prohibitive, like a historical thing, because that building there is not.
Plan review regulations, it talks about architectural requirements. You might wanna look at that, the site, uh, site plan review, um.
Site plan review guidelines. It speaks to architectural requirements and I don't think there's anything in there that was like this, although I will tell you. There's nothing that makes, I don't know what street that is, it has the. I call them the, uh.
Treehouses?
The treehouse. You know, so that's a totally different concept there too, so all I want saying is, it's just. Yeah, whatever street that is, just, it's different.
That's true.
I'll, I'll look at it, this is, uh, village centered districts, right, so it's, this is where they're flexible and. Looking to have.
Yeah.
Any concepts.
Flexible as far as dimensional requirements, not so much the site name and new regulations.
Those, the commercials gonna be mixed use.
Mixed use.
So, you, you're gonna wanna look at the site plan review regulations, article Roman numeral fifteen. It says site and building design requirements. Um. It talks about roof siding.
Yes.
Windows, doors, architectural features, lighting, I mean, it's kind of general language, but. Um.
What do you all think?
Three pages.
Well, what's the, i- i- as a purpose of the housing for workforce housing or is it, or? Rental to anybody?
Uh, I mean, anybody. I mean, work or play or.
Workforce. Workforce.
Is it short-term housing or long-term?
When you get to.
Uh. More than likely, it's gonna be short-term housing in the location that it's at right now.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think that's a good site for a big workforce housing concept, I mean, that's not something I would wanna do there.
Okay, any small question, whether you can use it for housing versus an A or B or a hotel, hotel kind of use.
What would you do?
I'd use it.
I guess what I would do, I mean. You're the investor, so whatever you think you can get the best return on.
I was just thinking that workforce housing might give more flexibility, I don't know if that makes any sense or not, but.
Or what, what kind of flexibility, architectural?
Yeah.
If you were looking for waivers.
If you, because we're, the town's really looking for workforce housing and.
I know.
It, it's, it's really hard to, to not. Say no to workforce housing and it, the, the state actually requires you to allow workforce housing in some. Shape or form, so it, it might give it a little more. Support, I would think, if it was something like workforce housing versus just.
Yeah.
A short term.
And I would love to, I would love to do a workforce housing, in fact, I've been, um, meeting with a couple of investors between Lincoln and Woodstock, because I think it's absolutely necessary. Um, I'm watching the, the amenities struggle with work, workers who have to travel forty miles to get. Low wage pay, I get that. We actually analyzed this site initially for that, but this site is not the site for workforce housing, now, that being said. I would love to do a workforce housing project in Lincoln.
When you say this, it's not, when you say this site is not the workforce, uh, housing. Uh. Place, what makes you say that?
It's, it's retail, it's, it's high traffic, it's location where you don't have, you can't build community, my understanding of what a, a solid workforce housing. Um. Uh, complex would be, would be something where there's amenities for those that live there, trails, uh, river, um. Playground, and you would do it where multiple people can gather together as a community, as opposed to. I mean, these that I've drawn up, there's no family living in any of those, they're too small. These are minimalists, this is a minimalist, uh, concept.
We did have, but.
I think Danielle wants to say something.
Yeah, I disagree, I, I mean, I know a lot of people that struggle looking for places to rent and they would live in a tent in my backyard if I let them. You know.
Yeah, I agree, listen, I agree, but I also understand. That real estate is based on three things, right, location, 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 this is right in the town, it would make it unaffordable, therefore, it doesn't actually make sense. To be workforce housing when you're working to get rent. At an affordable. Number.
Well, it's up to you, I mean, you have to do that, but I, I think that if, if you're gonna put containers up there. I, I. And, and just say that's what it is and you're gonna make it. For, uh, rent. Other than workforce housing, I think you're gonna see some. Kickback from, uh, a butters and, um, people say. Look at this.
So would you, as a planning board, rather me do this project or the one that's approved?
I'd rather see you do the one that's approved.
Really?
Yep.
But you're the one who wanted the green space.
I know. But I think that, you know, the only reason I wanted the green space was because it, it, it's. To, if you gotta rent it, the people there should have a little more green space. I think the concept.
But that's not, but that's not workforce housing either.
No, I know. I, I.
Those units, with those units.
I think it looks better.
Expensive.
I think it fits, I think it fits the, the. Architecture of, of what's around better, um, than. Than the, I think that's a pretty unique concept, like I said, I, I.
This?
I think it's a unique concept, you know, the storage containers, but. I just, you know, I'm like, like that, I just don't see.
But what, though? But what though?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
But what? You said you 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 think it's a cool concept, but.
No, no, no. Look, I'm into unique things, I don't have a problem with that. But I think that that in trying to keep with the character of the town. I.
What is the, what is the character of the town right now?
Well, you have a good point.
I mean, can can we define it and can we define where it's going? Because I don't know that the mill houses. Are is the is the defining character anymore, and that's certainly not a dilapidated yellow one.
Well.
Uh, I think that Main Street has a number of. Retail on the first floor and and and. Uh, full time housing on the second floor. And. Over the last twenty years, we've lost a lot of that second floor housing as it's been converted. But um. That still exists on Main Street or one house, two houses back from Main Street, where it's retail or commercial on the first floor. And living space upstairs. And and so I think that that concept certainly could end across the street here because um. There there's a lot of that's still on Main Street, although it is disappearing. We'd like to see that come back. Um, I thought that your approved plan included um. Long term housing, not short term housing. Even if it was expensive. Um. At least it's long term housing. Is that is that was that correct?
It it was, but it's not workforce housing, because my understanding of definition of workforce housing is something that's affordable. For people that work. At a service industry type job.
Well, you know, that's, we we have, you know, some of these resorts have mid to high level managers that need long term housing, so they would be able to pay. They would be able to pay higher rent and so.
Higher, yeah, you're right.
We have we have, you know, management positions, we also have. You know. Police officers, school teachers, you know, other, you know, professional people. That need a place to live.
Again, I if I find a large parcel of land, I would love to create a community. That. People would live in. But here I am with a. A postage stamp. Smack dab in the middle of downtown. Again.
I think OJ's, OJ's comments are are. Spot on, um, I I think to bring back some of the um. Retail space on a lower level. I mean, you had been over there with Bella Casa and then up above there. You know, tie nine, you know.
The next one, the next one.
So these do, these aren't retail commercial concepts on the first floor.
Your first one was that you had retail on a first first floor.
This this one is, so food truck. Retail on a budding and and then and then the second eight foot contain uh twenty foot container into the courtyard. With a retail courtyard environment.
Joe wants to say something.
You keep talking about food truck, what's it, what does food truck look like? Lockman coming in, back there or something, wheel wheel back and forth?
Literally, literally pulls in, plugs in. Pulls it unplugs and pulls out.
A regular food truck truck, yeah, on wheels.
Carol?
Well, the food trucks, they have a whole separate set of rules that apply to them.
Where are those found?
Well, there's this, they could need to have a vendor license. And those are called transient vendors.
But that's the business owner needs to have that, right? Not the landowner?
Well, if you're gonna have a different one every day, that.
Well, they have to have, I mean, you you basically, they have to pay. Per day, so it's um, I mean, I have applications for.
Okay, but am I right that that's the business owner, not the landowner?
Well, you have to, you as the as the property owner, you're gonna have sign, you're gonna have to be almost like a co applicant.
Okay.
Transient vendor license, so you.
Okay.
So every single vendor that you have in there, you have to. There also is a state license they have to get, they come when they.
Okay.
Live for it. Uh, but I think it's called a hocking.
Vendors and hackers license or something.
Yeah, vendors. License or something. Um, so that's an annual thing that they get. And then. There there's a certain pay, you know, payment based on how many days they're there. So my my, I have one regular um. Hacker vendor who sells maple syrup. So like he has, he sell, it depends on how many days.
Yeah.
In calendar. And, you know, I mean, it's just more complicated than. You know, plugging in a guy.
Yeah, I mean, I was being facetious when I said it could change every day, I mean, that is. Um, true, but it's not realistic.
Anyway. Um. I mean, I could, I obviously I can send you the application, I can. Uh, it's in the, it's in the land use plan ordinance, it's near the end.
Okay, I'll check that out for sure.
Anyway, so so it's. Just a little more complicated than this.
So can I ask a question or slash a uh? Ask for some uh. Assistance here, one of the conditions of uh extending was that if I come in with a site plan approval. That I would be waiving my existing one. I'm feeling as though. Coming in with a site plan approval may be a risk at this point, and I'm wondering if I could come in. Without the risk of losing my other approval if I am not accepted with this.
Well, I mean, I think your current approval would only go away once the new approval was.
That, that's not what the condition says though.
Well, cause it it was, I mean, basically he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to lose his current approval.
Right, I I thought it was, it would only go away if it's replaced with a new right.
I I thought so too, but in reading this. It. Doesn't. Read that way.
If he had one site plan approval. That makes person go away, doesn't it?
The conceptual is not, no.
Then if it, the one if you didn't want to go by, that'd be the one that's current, wouldn't it?
Right, but basically you can't have two approvals. At the same time, because you ran into issues, run into issues before with an applicant that had. Two approvals.
I don't see that as part of the condition.
Where are you, where are you getting that interpretation from?
So on the agenda condition, the planning board extended the site plan approval for one year. To January twelfth, two thousand twenty, with the condition that when Mr. Styles comes in for site plan review for a new project. The original approval is no longer valid.
Well, it should have said approved, you know, we've got approvals for.
Can I get clarity on that, that if I cut?
Go ahead, yeah, I'm gonna call the board, so he's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Basic. When this is current approval go away, when he applies for a new um. I'm asking the question. When this is, when this is current cycle then approval go away, when he applies for another cycle plan approval? Or when the second second cycle plan approval should get approval?
I think it should be the latter, when it gets approved.
Right, okay. That's, go ahead.
I agree with you. The thing is, he has a sign fine approval. It can be, it's all done, it's never really a fight for it technically.
Right, well, yeah, we're not talking about tonight, but we're talking about, yeah.
This is all conceptual, then.
Right.
If he has the original one, then approved.
Yeah.
And then for conceptual. Person doesn't doesn't go away until he starts to fully step into the second one.
Right.
That's the point I'm trying to make. We get a conceptual and the one has been approved, that we're gonna tweak the both. He would just more efficient economic wise and. Fastwise to build.
Do you want anybody to know what I'm talking about? Yeah, yeah, I do, I I just, the only question I had is. Can you apply for a? Application for an another. Project when you have one already approved on the same lot?
Well, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know, I I just, doesn't make it too confusing as as.
Well, why, you know, you could make part of your approval rescinding the old. You know what I mean, so. Until.
Clarify that, that the old approval goes away with the new approval.
Yeah.
But if should the new proposal not get approved, the old approval doesn't automatically go away.
Right, would would still.
So that's what I wanted clarity on.
Okay, Jim was calling the board, right?
Right.
Yes.
Are we all in agreement with that?
I'm I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement with that, I'm in agreement.
You're right, I know, that's what I said, you're the same thing.
You agreed.
We all agree.
So filing a site plan approval, uh, site plan review uh application and will not um. Will not void and invalidate my existing approval then.
Unless the unless the next one gets approved, then the right.
Correct, then it's a condition that the other one is eliminated, yeah, all right, great, awesome.
We've had this done several times before in town the past few years.
Mark, I I have a question.
Yeah.
The the decks off this thing don't have any, don't show any. Sport posts holding them up, are they all?
They.
Cantilever?
Yeah, it would be steel, steel beam cantilevers, but that will be in the plan that I, you know, obviously, all of that will be.
I'm just wondering about parking a truck under a deck with if if there were support posts.
Yeah. It would be I, their I beam like steel uh cantilevers, as well as the ones coming off into the courtyard. So there's the, there'll be eighteen inches in essence separating the two. So uh structures from the first and the second floor, which will have then a drape around it.
Got it, and I think speaking, I have another question of the deck, I mean. Can you check, I don't know if you can park food truck under a residential deck, so make for residential building.
Yeah, with smoke and the ventilation and all about.
If we do, if we do deem that, the original plan was to have. Um. But uh either a ten or a twenty foot uh structure underneath it anyhow. So if 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 the food truck becomes. The nonstarter, then it would simply be another uh structure, eight by twenty more than likely.
It did have to go, say, by a marsh to farm. Get sprinkled and everything else and.
Sprinkled? No, what what would need to be sprinkled?
Oh.
We have a food truck, it's cooking in it, right?
You're talking about ransom system.
And that's what this is, put this down, protect the truck, go into the apartment.
Most of them have those.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know, that would all be a.
But I'm just advising you should investigate.
I will.
Yeah.
Mark, is there no roof on this, it's just a flat surface?
On which?
The metal structure.
Oh, so the the top floor, we would, we were gonna put a faux roof so that we could actually have um. Uh, solar, but it may be flat, depending, it's, I'm talking with the solar people to decide whether or not. It would work as flat or if we need to create like a an angle on the roof.
It's shown as flat.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, go ahead, go.
So would would you have a preference one way or another?
Well, I mean, to blend it in with the community, I mean. Why throw another monkey in the wrench and not have it?
Okay, I like that.
Similar to the other structures, you know, the older homes and, I mean, the roof would, you know, blended in a little bit better.
Mm hmm.
I I agree with that, I think the roof would add a lot of.
Yeah.
Architectural.
I mean, this just looks like a box with stairways, I mean, it's not really attractive just in the images here, sorry, but um. It's just.
Okay.
No offense, I didn't draw him.
Yeah.
Even with the first plan you presented. See, Bob has some of the same questions I'm gonna say right now. When you have the, the way the way the roof pitches, the snow water falls off, how's it gonna affect people walking down the street and side streets?
Well, if it was flat, it wouldn't, and I think the solar panels would actually help uh to melt and then and then drain it into the storm plan.
If we have the county, they didn't set the rules to snow load in the other county, doesn't answer here, I don't know if you know that or not.
What's the snow load, what's the rules on the snow load?
Required a higher snow load, the most area of county in New Hampshire.
But but if he's using these, if he's gonna be using those steel containers, yeah, don't have to worry about solo.
We've been together, buildings were bombing, you know. Other than the original plan in the beginning.
Yeah.
Where they're all sealed, if I all wood.
These are all steel.
I mean, it.
I'm not, I'm not understanding, Joe. Could someone help me?
I just lost most of the front piece off, you have there with me. What I'm saying is. He goes thirty four feet primary eaves. Another ten fifteen feet above it. That's almost forty forty five feet height. Snow slides off, goes down, could hit something down down below. If it's a flat roof, they have a high snow load. Which is a, in New Hampshire, this part of New Hampshire, managed by the county, you have a different snow load rating than any other part of the state, I don't know if you know that.
What height are you talking about?
Yeah, he's only two stories, I don't know how he's gonna get up to thirty four feet.
Thirty four feet eaves.
I know, but the building's only two two stories, I don't think the two stories.
It's like twenty feet tops.
Twenty, okay. But even, even so, whether it's twenty feet or thirty feet, it's still gonna be dramatically higher. Requires here than we could rest of the state. For county ordinance. If you mistake, you can check into it.
Why, I guess you just say that something, you just check the snow load, trying to help you with.
Okay.
Well, same.
What you have built the the current spec, the rest of the state, coming to talk down, finds then his right, right specs in the area.
Right.
Sure it's gonna come down on.
Right, let him, let him check that out, I I.
Based on what I see of the sighting, he's only got one way to pitch it anyway, which would be right and left as you're staring at it.
Yeah, that's what I would think, that's.
And that it would be going in between the buildings and not to the front.
The only major issue I had was out was the turning radius coming in off Maple Street. When uh it's free. That freaks so narrow.
If you all own this, what would you do to it?
I like your first comment.
I like your first, I like your comment. Okay, retail on the first floor.
But that takes out one fifty five.
But that was.
But doesn't it combine them?
Yeah, but it takes it out, you don't like one fifty five?
You know, as I said, you're you're the investor, it's your call what you want to do.
But I I get that, but I want to be set, as as I mentioned, the first day that I met with you all is, I want to be sensitive, this is right across the street from Town Hall. I get that.
I think it's seen or approved than the metal box, honestly, whether the other structure is gone, but this is certainly. Nice than.
Yeah, that's pretty aesthetic.
This is nice.
You know, it it's it's an older England style look to it with the peaks and. Gables and and.
Got a mixture of siding and the stone.
Yeah, I just like.
Shingles, the clavber.
I like it better in the box, but I like the boxes with the roof better than just square boxes.
Yeah, but you can't, who knows what it's gonna be.
What about you, Jimmy?
I don't make someone make that.
Okay.
How many, how many residential units are in the current plant? I don't have that front of me.
Six.
But they're full size.
This would be, this would be five.
And and what about that?
Right?
Well, five between the two. Cause that you, we were, we were. Yeah, the other one took out the other one too.
Yeah, but how about the commercial space, was it bigger in the? Your first proposed than this one?
Everything's bigger, I mean, I took up the footprint of the lot, basically, there's no green space on that one.
No. I know, I. It's a tough decision, but if I had to choose between the two. I like you. I like that.
With no green space, blocking all.
I know.
The green space. I designed this for you. Thinking about green space, I'm I'm surprised.
I appreciate that, I'm a big green space person, I, you know, I I really am, I just.
And I heard you loudly, like it resonated in my head for a very, very long time.
Um, being a landscaper, I still like. The look of the old one, you know, they approved.
Is there a way that you could? That you could. Construct two buildings. Stick built instead of the metal boxes that would look more New England style and leave the green space in between and still get what you want?
It wouldn't work. You're asking me to take down one fifty five, you mean?
Yeah.
No, I wouldn't, that, I mean, that's. That's not cost effective.
You could keep one fifty five and do that one. And then do another one, leave a little green space in between and do another. And then do another one, leave a little green space in between and do another New England style instead of the metal boxes.
Well, there's still the green on the corner of Maple Street with the shrubbery on the corner. You know, there's still.
You know what I'm saying? Do another stick build.
Why though? Why stick built? Why not recycled material? Why not more structurally sound material? Because that's the way it always has been.
Unique concept, it's just the the square look of it, but again, a roof structure, even a faux roof structure.
I don't wanna point at other properties down, up and down this road, but.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm not. I I don't want to, but I could tell you that there's some that aren't aesthetically pleasing. So where are we going as a town?
I don't see any.
Nobody like it.
Right, it's true.
I don't know if that's true.
Last time I did it, what you get mad at? You're telling me.
Well, we have these applications.
Nothing to do with you, you did that.
I'm trying to find something that's comparable to that in a in a.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna hear in Lincoln, but you will in a lot of towns USA right now. It's a, it's a, it's a concept that's catching fire.
I don't know, maybe if you sent a photograph with the proposed, I think it would have been a bit better.
Do you have any, that's a good point. Do you have any photographs of other towns?
Yeah, they're 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 all over. I mean, you can go on container homes. There's, it's, it's a huge, huge industry that's brewing, but where I fell in love with the mixed use commercial um, concept was in Fort Collins, Colorado. It's a very cool concept and I would honor this town and and give it a very, very nice touch. This is not a tuna can concept. This is a place where people can be together.
What do you call it?
Storage containers.
Container homes.
Container homes.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's all kinds of Airbnb requests, but kind of the container homes or private homes, and some of them are pretty elaborate, like with, you know, six, seven containers. Um, but some of them are respectfully pretty dumpy with, with like mismatched, like.
Also, yeah.
But, I mean, there's different ways to do it. There's some beautiful homes. They they'll cut the sides out of these and put in big sliders and big windows and.
Well, that's what this is. So let me pull this up again.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, the data base are gonna be the shell, you're gonna.
Okay.
Yes.
A lot of the advertising Facebook, you know, Marketplace.
They're all over Marketplace. It's not letting me share for some reason. Oh, there we go. No.
Yeah, I mean, there's one here with a roof on it and it's so much more appealing than.
Well, this is, don't forget, this is a conceptual sketch.
Yeah.
But here, here's the sliders that you were referring to, right? That they're cutting in and. So, again, it's subjective whether or not this appeals to you, but it appeals to a lot of people, including me.
Don't let me, don't let me be your guy, Mark. I mean, look, I mean, we we we're seeing other things that are happening like the, you know, the, the other ones that are down there, you know, so.
What's that? The ones by Nordic Inn?
No.
The tree houses.
The tree house ones down on Franklin Street. So, I mean, to me, the the only guide that I have is a planning board member and all honesty, I like to see green space, so this is, this is kind of attractive to me, but for me, it's about the character of the town and first and foremost, are are any of butters gonna have any issues with it?
Well, they're all gonna get notice of this, right?
Right, so so if there was a big butter turn up, said, we don't want something like this, then I probably, you know, I might look at it and say, is there, you know, maybe maybe you better go back to your first plan, but I don't know without having them here, whether anyone would say that. I don't know whether Dennis.
What if, what if, uh, what if some of your fellow residents supported it?
That'd be great. If the residents support it, that's fine.
Does that sway your opinion on what you think about it?
Oh, yeah, for sure. Most definitely.
I I also guess that that this design has less impact on green space, has less impact on parking. And with a roof and some architectural enhancements, it could blend it.
I think it, I think if you.
But what is it blending into? That's what I'm confused about. What is it blending into?
Do, one of the things you could do too is with the green space you have, you could make that look pretty sharp.
I know, I plan to.
And as long as you left it like the green space, but I do remember things like where Subway was, we may then leave green space out there and there were trees out there. Well, guess what? I'm how many years later, they cut all the trees down around and took all the benches and tables out. Now it's just a, it there's just a, I think there's one table out there, so. Green space can make things look nice, you know, with a, all all sorts of different things there, you know?
Oh, yeah.
And I think a roof, I think OJ is correct about, you know, some sort of a roof architect, we will give it something. But, yeah, I mean, I I could see something like that. Again, my own concern, Mark, is if the if if a butters have a real concern or business people or something come and say, we don't want something like that.
Okay.
It looks, it 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 looks like an ocean front.
And, and well, that's fair because that's who puts you in your seats to measure for them, right? So, um, yeah, let me see. I'll I'll do some door knocking.
And and Mark, I think that, you know, if you look down the street, you you got the one on the corner here, it's just an old New Englander, Wharthington style house.
The one with the twelve units behind?
Yes.
Yeah.
But the house out on Main Street is an old New England style house with with a a first floor and a three quarter second floor. And then if you look up, you got an old New England house that turned into a pancake house. The next one is an old New England house with a high nine restaurant housing above. You get a real estate agency housing above both.
Then you got a strip mall.
Well, then we have. Then we have your two places.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, so so when you say what, I I just think that square boxes would not fit in with that that well buildings as as much as just putting a roof on it. I I, I think there's some architectural um, appeal to having a, you know, a series of the roof structures, old New England style, even if they're containers.
I'll talk to my design team for sure about that.
You know, and and honestly, even if you did it on on, like you were talking about faux, I mean, if you if you did it on, you know, a full roof on the first, I don't know, eight feet of that place and then just did did a did a.
Ah, that's interesting.
Going back.
That's interesting.
Visually, that's much more appealing than a flat box.
Uh huh.
Joe, Joe, go ahead and stand up first, Kelly.
No, just work for the company out of Gatineau in Quebec. They build tiny apartment buildings. Each each apartment, each unit going to the size of a eight by twenty box, second.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you can, on a, on these box things, you can put the facade over the steel, whatever you want to look like. Eventually it's done.
Sure.
Yeah.
Forty-eight steel, but like you said, you have a facade in the front, like, you know, west town, they always have the roofs with the flat or whatever. They do a facade in the front, so it makes it change, so it'll look at the concept.
Well, the same thing with the the windows and the doors, if they're not just, if they don't just look like low cost windows and low cost doors, if they have some panes in them and stuff like that, you can.
I'm not planning on doing any low cost items. It's gonna be nice finishes. It's gonna be, it would be very cool if you approved it. Very cool. The town would love it.
Carol has a question.
Well, I think in the past you have allowed the flat roof with the facade in the front. You know, you have, I think the hotels.
Rite Aid has that.
Rite Aid.
McDonald's has that, Hampton Inn has that.
Hampton Inn has.
And again, it makes it a little bit more appealing and a lot of people hate the Hampton Inn, but picture the Hampton Inn with a flat roof.
Right.
Okay, like.
Well, the original plan was it just looked like a, like a nineteen fifties hospital, a flat roof and.
Box.
Big, huge.
This won't look like that.
Yeah, the other thing about this new technology with solar panels is that they put it right into the the material for the roof itself also. Instead of having it separate.
It's pretty, pretty high tech.
That's it is.
High tech, yeah.
I'm not sure if that site is is, uh.
High cost.
Well, I don't know. Yeah, that the the sole shingles are high cost. Is site is positioned right for.
They use those out, they usually use those in southern locations, cause they don't have to fall off and ruin them, you know, it's like.
But your your panels, if you put them, if if you peak the roof lengthwise, you put panels there, they're gonna be facing east and west, not south. Is that correct?
South is ideal, but if it's getting sun, it'll work.
I don't know how you're gonna put south facing.
I was gonna say, have you done a, have you done a solar?
No, I'm at conceptual at this point.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
That's not gonna, again, that's not gonna make or break my opinion. That's not gonna make or break my vote.
Right.
You can have solar, can't, I mean, if it doesn't, because it's in the shade and pointing the wrong way, you can't do it.
Well, they do make.
Right.
Most follow the sun, so.
Again, it's, yeah, they.
That was pretty cool.
So.
Alright.
Have anything else?
No, as long as, uh, when I come in, where you've got clarity that I'm not waving the other one, so I'll leave you to, uh, the 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 South Peak folks and, um, I'll be seeing you soon. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate you. Bye now.
All right, next one. Cookin Mountain Road, eight blocks.
Okay.
So they've asked.
They asked for, um, there to be continued to, um, the next meeting. I'm I'm about to go away for two weeks, so. Hopefully I can be back.
If they work.
And. Um, I'll be back May first, uh, but the next meeting, I think, uh, is May tenth.
May tenth.
May tenth, so we could continue until May tenth. This is, we could set it, this, um.
They just asked about this continuance today.
Yeah, alright, yeah, have you, um.
Nothing like sure.
Alright, so Carol, has everyone read the memo about the application, got a witness?
Yes.
I did.
Have she, does anyone have any issues with it? Any questions?
I'm not gonna be here anytime.
No, you reprinted it for you.
Okay, but I mean, I guess I'd like to ask Carol that you share the applicant for the benefit.
I have not shared with any other than you.
Okay, so, I mean, I guess how does everyone feel about her?
We need to rush, so that you could get a sense of what this thing, what the process we talked about would look like, you know, so. Um, we.
But I mean, is it ready? We said talk to the applicant, but no.
Well, I could, I I couldn't, what do you wanna do?
Asking the board. I mean, I think just for them, I mean, they have a month to get the ad hoc to their own house.
Wasn't the next step that they were gonna move the technical review team to?
They did. Oh.
No, there's no.
Well, the technical review team meant to look at it.
Yeah, they've looked at this application and they don't think it's complete.
So what what we did was Karina reached out to, um, our attorney who said, told Karina in the context of some other thing that he had a good relationship with Derek Lick, who was the attorney for, um.
Tom Braden Conway.
And so, um, so they, they wanted to have that conversation about, you want us to go forward with what we think might be that old master plan? We wanna go forward with something that is born along the lines of what you want, you and that vision and what you uh, want. And then James Burns, who was the right hand man for Mark, came in, um, yesterday evening and I showed him all the different parts of, and he took a picture of the different parts of what we think the master plan is, old one, or what it might be or the raft anyway, and then he was gonna go back and we have not heard back from, uh, our attorney was not heard back from Derek Lick. So that's.
Everything's in limbo.
What do I, okay.
I mean, I don't know how that affects the, yeah, I will call Ludacris, I mean, the fireside one, I still have questions on that after the last meeting, so.
Okay, so. Something, I mean, if you just wanna just, just wanna continue to the tenth, then we'll just leave it at that?
I think we leave it, yeah, because I, I I have questions on the fireside.
Wait, wait a minute. We're discussing whether we wanna send the letter to the technical review team's comments to the applicant.
Right.
So, I mean, why would we not do that?
Right.
I mentioned, but I know no problem with those two.
Okay, I think you said no. Okay.
I was just talking about the fireside ones. I I need some answers from them. Someone. We gave an approval, but it doesn't meet, and it, it was supposed to be reviewed by the town. And it doesn't meet the, it doesn't meet the master plan, it doesn't meet the the requirements, the density requirements, does, I mean, there's a. Well.
A lot of questions.
It's 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 not our approval. Shouldn't shouldn't have been given up that way, huh? I mean, I feel bad about, I was being, I was totally ignorant to all of this until I woke up the next day and started looking at it and said, hey, this is not right. You know, and it's just, I feel bad. I mean, I just don't. I don't know, I don't know if we can do anything better, but I, I mean, I think the only thing that we we could do would be to to bring it up in the open transparently and say, hey, look, you know, this thing doesn't meet this, it doesn't meet that, this is, you know. It shouldn't have, it it shouldn't have happened. Also, we also, we also proved it based on conditions and the condition is that it beats down regulations and stuff like that, which it doesn't. So it doesn't meet the density requirements, you know, so.
They're gonna have the.
I mean, how how do we, you know, the open space requirement doesn't mean any of that, so I don't know how that works. And I'm not trying to stop them, I just want, I think that they need to get the, figure out what they're gonna use for a master plan and meet, you know, that will help straighten out all the other questions so they can move forward and get what they wanna do and get moving on to it. I think it's, there's a lot of gray area here and this thing's being changed because of a lot of things like the different owners that have been there, well, and things been a little there there and I I just, it's confusing.
Okay, I mean, I think at this point we're in, you know, it's still to try and work out a resolution.
Right, and we have, except, it's the same thing with the our last step. I mean, this thing, we just, I mean, you know, if everybody's okay with it, I'm okay with it. I I think we just need to make sure everybody's on the same playing field and that work. We're all, you know, that they're going what they said, what they want, we're gonna do, that's. So, I I would say send it if you wanna know, but if they could have.
Yeah, okay, you okay with that? Alright. For the better for the applicant, you'll send that list along.
And, yeah, I mean, if they have any questions, you can answer. Oh, you're gonna be gone, right? So I don't know how they're gonna get answers on their questions when you send it, right?
At least the engineers can talk. Yeah, the engineers can talk. At least they have a chance on change, make change if they said, oh, that's right, and then they'll they'll make a change before they, just as they're coming in with all of us being aware that there's something wrong.
Right.
You know, this this lot is too small. Well, well.
How can they tell us?
Why, why don't they go back and like, oh, yeah, it is, and then redraw one little line and fix it?
But if they have questions on like the densities and the and the and the open space and stuff like that, then Carol's probably gonna need people in a health model or something.
Well, the engineers can speak to each other too, that, you know, and they can read the land use plan.
It should be.
Me, right, it's my best to really design a site.
I mean, we're not the only ones technically have to prove it. I mean, there's all these other.
I'm sorry.
There's all these other segments in the town approval process that that need to go forward too, so they have a lot of hangups coming.
So we have a meeting on the twenty-sixth. There's no meeting on the twenty-sixth.
There is no.
Well, you've met twice already. I, I mean, even, we haven't had that discussion, but.
I won't be, I won't be here on the twenty-sixth.
I won't be here on the.
I won't be here.
I won't be there on the.
Maybe I'll change my plans.
Sure.
Well, you're gonna heal up, I'm gonna heal up, I don't.
Right, you you would joke it, but you're all up. Danielle, you here?
On the twenties, yeah, I'm gonna be here, but not all the time.
Well, Joe's gonna hear his grapes, number one. Great.
Yeah.
You can grade it, Greg. You can grade it right, so the twenty sixth, Joe. Okay. All right, let's move on to this business here. Um is there a motion to continue this? Hearing of this application until May tenth at six P M.
We'll move.
Second.
All in favor? opposed? All right.
It don't seem right that we can oppose, you know.
Oh, no.
But there's one other thing too that that I think Carol brought up to me is that. Or Karina brought it. When I was talking about. The ordinances have changed. And that when the clock starts ticking now, you only have.
Well, we have, we have fifteen days in house. Um to look at the application to see if it's complete. And then. Once you've decided it's complete, then you have sixty five days.
But whatever it is, you cannot extend that. At the end of that time period. It is assumed to be approved if we don't take action.
No.
That's what Karina told, I'm telling you that.
You can mutually agree to maybe extend the.
We can extend six to five days, I mean.
Karina says that it's this came up this year.
Correct, I mean, once.
She said, well, this year or last year.
I mean, once.
And she said that you can't do that. So what do you mean? We've always extended.
You might be right, I don't know.
Okay. It's never been that way.
It's not what I wanted to bring it up. I said, the the planning board does, I know it. It just, I was looking to see if she was on it. She said it it just happened like last, just go, once you reach whatever that milestone date is, it's either six, whatever it is. We haven't taken action on it from the time that the clock starts and it is assumed to be approved.
We haven't taken action on it, but if we had a hearing and then we've had another hearing. And then there's something that that hasn't been resolved.
Oh, no, we have to, you have to come to a resolve and then that. Say sixty five for that.
We don't have to municipal association to weigh in on that.
But let's, so let's say that, you know, Mr. Applicant, you know, we're almost at sixty five B, you haven't met. What we're asking you for, if you wanna extend it, they can ask, they have to ask us to extend it.
That that's what I'm telling you, okay, old male.
Yeah, let's just look into it. There's no grades, yes or no.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Question, I'll give you the same answer from all three. Hey, look, when someone brings up to your attention, it kind of.
All right, so is there a motion to extend the hearing on this till May tenth at six?
Gee, Cal, just going back to what you say. If if if. Theoretically. Eight people come in with major projects this week. Okay? And those all applications get presented to this planning board. Are we obligated to to hear them all the first meeting after we meet? What if our agenda's full? What what's our?
Well, I can just tell you what Peter Molya used to tell.
Okay.
Said, you do the best you can. Try to get them on as soon as you can and. You know, if the. If the agenda is full, then you just have to put them on in the next meeting. Um but it's one of those, you know, you have to be reasonable, you have to do the best you can to. Meet the requirements, but um. Anyway, that was Peter's advice. Now we have Justin, so.
Could be small, I mean.
Well, it'd also be like. If if eight applications come in and we want. Staff. Recommendations on if it's complete and.
They're gonna look at it. Karina, the team is gonna look at what comes in. To see if they can, we'll keep moving things along to see if like if something's missing or. Um you know, they are gonna try to.
And that's why she made, I think, that thing about how they how they react to it.
Right, which is great to have that process.
Process.
You know, I think that's that's gonna be helpful for us, you know, the applicants. I guess I thought that we could, we could fill an agenda. Reasonably. And then it's okay, that meeting is filled, you're gonna have to go to the next meeting. I thought we could do that.
Well, that's what Peter had told me, you know, that I called Peter.
I'm gonna ask that question.
If I may, I think theoretically, if we came to that, we could just have an additional meeting to meet the time time constraints.
Well, probably, we don't have to. We we only have them every other Wednesday. We could have another Wednesday meeting and have it, so there's nothing that precludes us having an extra meeting except for us.
Right, maybe we got a bunch of um. You know, nothing fits in on the twelfth, we could have an extra meeting on the thirteenth. Um any any public participation?
Sure, I am, I'm Roland Madison, by the way.
Hi.
Um I'm just interested in seeing what was going on, because there's been a lot of building in the town and so forth. So one of my comments, I'm just hearing you guys talk today. And one of the comments you made presenting is. What criteria do you have for approval? And you know, there's a lot of old structures in town. It's it's not the most attractive Main Street. Going on here.
Well, let's, you know.
As a planning board, there needs to be a plan for what you want it to be. So that, you know, a bunch of stacked trailers sitting on top of one another. To me, it looks incredibly ugly. But. Um is that what you want it to be? Is that what you want the town to look like? Or do you have another plan? Like, should it be? Um colonial type of structures? I mean, what what do you want the thing to look like?
If I could wait on that, the town has two things to kind of guide it as far as I know. One is the town has a master plan. And then master plan, it it talks about housing a little bit in there. But it also has what Carol referred to earlier, which is some of the architectural guidelines that you use. People could come in and ask for waivers, just like anybody else can, or a different style or a different concept. And and you know, that that that's what makes things, that's. That's how progress goes, you know, I mean, things are changed, you know, the free housing down here, I mean. There was. That doesn't fit anywhere in town. But it it it's it's there today. And you know, it's, we really didn't have a lot of complaints about. Except for me, I mean, I didn't complain, I said I thought it was up. Out of the ordinary, but I mean, no one, none of the voters complained about it, you know, so.
But cancel our Main Street.
Okay, so um there is nothing, uh there is nothing that. Guides.
Architectural.
Architectural, anything for single family homes or duplexes. The only guidance there is really for commercial. Um use, that's in the site plan review regulations. And there are three pages that talk about architectural features. And it's very general language, um but there, it it looks to me like it going for the New England type.
So if if that's the case. How would this proposal presented tonight fit those general guidelines?
We haven't had a public hearing on it yet, so I mean, if, you know, if no one shows up, you know, we're not gonna get the comments.
He's looking for feedback to know whether he should proceed. Along that line or not, and if it doesn't fit the architectural guidelines in general, seems like he ought to be told that.
We don't have architectural guidelines, that's the thing. We've had an architectural guideline, except in a condo without agents. And the whole town.
They're they're in your site plan.
Site plan for commercial, but not for. But they're actually guidelines.
But that's commercial is what he's building.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like you guys, we need to have a roll over what the master plan looks like. To change it or not change it. Um if it's not specific enough. Let's come up with a, what you want the town to look like.
Master plans, you know, they're not due for updating till twenty twenty five, just just, you know.
That's, you know, it's.
Joe.
I tend to several seminars in Concord. One was to get rid of all the ratty buildings in town, but it's super what people out of state want. They don't like you in town anymore. It's what they want from out of state, and then we're gonna town in Boston or in Cape Cod. Or in Maine, that's the same as there, you know, we're gonna town would be in fewer leagues, you lived in Lincoln all your life. The 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 thing is about the town. If you have buildings that outdated, they look, they don't quite fit in, because when they belong enough, that's part of the ambiance of the town. Once you get rid of that ambiance, all you have now is is a stereotypical view of what people think it should be. And when it came up here, like, one great, one guy, one guy only this was Ivan, remember? He wanted to change this state, wanted to change where you wanted to, where it looked like. He left town. Doesn't left the old identity of the town. We tried to create a balance. Even what buildings we have, some kind of identity. Not sure it looks like an architect. Architects think, what happened in Colia downtown? You ever been down to Colia? Downtown Colia was a bunch of old beautiful buildings, eighteen ninety, eighteen eighty, nineteen eighty, eighteen eighty, up to the twenty. Brick buildings. Poms upstairs. Businesses downstairs. But every renewal, remember that one, that concept?
What's, I'm sorry.
They destroyed the whole town, took it away, everything. They put it back up the way that that they started should be, and it was dead for forty years. Now they're trying to bring back the old look. It it's not that we are against one way, but we're gonna find some kind of your own identity for the town. Where it's going. We had a downtown committee that had done this. They had a book, but this thick, but they recommended they had. Now we're just thrown away, everybody disagreed with it. Good points and bad points, people they might have seen that. The plans from the downtown committee. But nothing of it was even followed or gone through. Some parts I liked, some I didn't, like, everybody gets their own pace.
Well, Dennis, I mean, you know, if I just. Dennis over here had brought up. When they built these buildings over here, they did things like, if you take a look at it. It looked like the old woodshed, it has the old mill house. I mean, the old mill woodshed, look right here, and it had, he had a couplé on it, so it looked like that, so. Some of the, some of the developers, you know, have changed some of the concept. You know, and and. The um. The hotels, they, you know, they've changed a few things there and there to make it, to make it look a little bit.
About the architectural requirements.
So I mean, it's, this is. This is a unique. You know, this conceptual that we had tonight, um. But I think it's. Part of the problem, I think, is that I don't know how much information the voters get. When they get notified, do they say? Does it say what it's going to be roughly so that they can look at it? You know what I mean? And 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 that's.
I mean, you know, basically what you read on the agenda.
Does it say something like that that he's gonna put what it is? Because some may just think it's gonna be. Like we were talking about, retail space on the bottom, a building that's gonna be, a building that's gonna be retail space and then. A apartment on top, they're not thinking it's gonna be. Um.
Containers.
Containers, the same thing with the free house. I didn't think the free houses were gonna be free houses either. I kinda thought they were, I don't know. And and that's one of the things I think like over here at at um fireside. When people bought over there, they probably thought that was gonna be single family law, because it was supposed to be low density. And someone may not have come. And didn't realize that it's gonna be, it was a lot higher density. You know, that it's just gonna be home. They didn't realize how many were gonna be over there and all of that, so. I don't know if there's a way to. Do that, well, get too. Too much, you know, I mean, when you send out the notices of decision, if if. If anything's out of the normal, could it be identified and then notice up?
Then you have subjective, what what you consider.
Yeah, yeah, I, so I was asking.
I I think that's difficult to 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 do.
One person. This is just what we want, I'm not gonna give him too much info.
But if it doesn't fit, what I'm saying is, if it doesn't fit within the, I don't know, to say something like what what this gentleman's talking about, if it doesn't fit within. The guidelines of of of.
You know, again, we won't know that until we have the hearing. Carol.
Well, I've had discussions with him in the past, and he knows that they're.
But I mean, even this house over here, I mean, I mean, if he's thinking of being more like. You know, cost effective or, you know, um. Green energy, you know, the best thing he could do is. Modify the existing structure and update it to accommodate what he does, but he's trying to do.
Carol.
Well, the other thing that um I do is a lot of times the voters will call me and ask me if I can send them plans. And I do.
Yeah.
Cause I have digital copies of things. So if they wanna know where the subdivision is, or they wanna know, you know, what. They have for plans or designs or whatever it is, I just even. So, um.
So is that something we could put on? The notice, notices to the voters that. If if they are, if they are an email version or PDF, that if you're interested in seeing. Contact the.
Yeah, it says they're on.
I'm going to a site on the website and look at it.
So yeah, but send the notice, they get you.
Yeah, but when they notice, they'll look at this website, tell you what's coming on.
But no, it's just.
I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be anti this, anti that. But you bring up good points. Which gets that somewhere. We don't get a voice from the audience, we don't have any guideline, which direction we're gonna go. I appreciate your input, don't get me wrong.
I mean, part of it is, I, you know, I think the comment was made here about the hotel right on town. You know, whether it is attractive or not attractive. But is. You know, it's making decisions about what gets built. In terms of how does it fit in, not that everything has to be homogeneous and everything down and so forth, but does it look? Like you want the town to look like. Um and I think those. What something looks like, the architectural issue. Should be a very high concern.
If you like, you go to Quechua Gorge. All the old buildings are still there. They've been fixed up up front, like Danielle said, retro pit, so they look nice, they fit in. There isn't enough parking, there isn't enough walking space, but it fits in and they make, it's looking nice, they still make a killing on it. Was what they have. Can't expand on anymore to the way the buildings lay up. Lincoln is three and a half miles long, three miles wide. That's all the land we have left to work in Lincoln. Of all the land in Lincoln. Only one half, one percent is not built on. Half that one percent, a quarter, half that, four, half of one percent can't be built on because of rivers, wetlands, and others.
I think I disagree with Joe. I don't think.
It came to the North County Council.
Okay.
I don't care about what's gonna cross halftime, do I? You take a look at the properties available. Current, it it's not available, but owned by somebody. I mean, the Indian Head.
Indian Head.
Uh down down below the Indian Head with the white. The the. Across, a- across from uh Jake's place, but the. The motel units there.
Oh, Indian Head owns that land.
Back of that. Okay, so then you got. And then you got Clark's on the outside of Clark. Wait a minute, and then and then you start going up with the stuff that's not built now, okay, so you got. You got Forest Bridge, you got South Peak, you got, I mean, there's a ton of property.
I didn't say there wasn't, if you think about it. Out of the total land in Lincoln. Overall, which goes up to Livermore, Waterville.
National Forest Property?
And State Forest, State has, I think it's a landslide. Called Silver's Land.
See, I think the point. This is a good map to see that, right? So see this little red square here, the town of Lincoln is this big.
Right.
This is, this back right here is only this red square. And in the red square, there's only a strip from here. To the Woodstock Town Line, from the Woodstock Town Line up to Indian Head, that's it. So this strip right here. And this strip right here is it.
But there's a lot of property. There's a lot of property in that strip.
I mean, I'd I'd imagine that. As town grows, a lot of the existing property on Main Street. Will become quite valuable to be converted.
They are now.
Yeah, and so people will buy it and wanna refurbish it and put businesses in of some kind.
They just bought a house up on the. What is it, West Street? For three hundred thousand? That's a substandard lot, the guy demolished the whole building, kind of built a brand new place there.
Sure, so that that's, but on Main Street particularly.
That's on the side street.
But let him finish.
I'm saying particularly on Main Street. As that happens, I think you wanna have a. Concept for what you want things to look like. As to as as things slowly get refurbished and redone. And this one with putting, you know, cans in and, you know. Storage containers. Is that what you want it to look like? Because that's gonna be there for a long time.
I don't agree with you, Jimmy.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, does it make sense to? With the planning board to. Maybe before we get to the, the redesigning of the master plan for the town to. Start, we used to have those committees, remember, that, that, I keep.
Downtown Committee.
Downtown Committee. Would, would it make sense to start a small committee to say, that wants to look at it, make it. Make it, you know, comprised of business people and, you know, that, that, my, apparently a here or stuff like that, you know, just.
No one comes to the planning board meeting.
All comes until, until like this gentleman makes a comment, cause he happens to be here, so.
Only one. I think that, that we should be that committee. But from, you know, advertise, promote, that we're gonna have a hearing session to, to kick off the new master plan process.
Twenty twenty five.
Well, we're gonna sign next year, and I.
Right, so we're gonna start next year, so, so a year from now, or even earlier, February, whatever. We'll, we'll have a public hearing to, to get input on what.
Vision.
People's vision is for the whole town. Main Street could be one discussion topic, but, but the business park should be a topic. The blue street should be a topic.
Employee housing, you know, deal with all that.
See what people's thoughts are on that.
Honestly, that's one of the reasons that I wanted to join planning board, cause I thought that we had more like. Oh, in making decisions, you know, like these metal structures. You know, especially after I learned that they're gonna start tearing down these old mill houses on Main Street, it's like, my God, what are they gonna put in? You know, I mean, it's gonna look like North Conway, and it's horrible. I mean, that's why I thought I'd join and, you know.
Once you have an historical district, we can't do a heck of a lot about it.
I guess I look at Main Street, that our Main Street, in my lifetime, has always been ugly. Okay, it, it, I mean, I look back when, when. Rogers Skylift used to be the underground ski shop, and that was an asshole, okay, it was a.
Rogers.
Where Rogers is now, it used to be the underground ski shop.
That one in the ground, they wanna call it underground.
It was an old ski shop that was flying far, okay? The door didn't even shut when you walked in, you couldn't shut the door. All right, and then as you proceeded up the street, there was building after building shop that were just kind of run down.
I used to be a time, this is a great little restaurant there, you had, uh, Stinky Dick's. Was they called? They had a snowmobile shop. Little goose, yeah, I mean, you know, they weren't all, they were typical doing one small businesses.
Maps that didn't have themes that weren't cohesive in any way.
But I think there was more small business back then in the.
There was a truck repair center where the seven eleven is, the, the, you know, Kent Country Store's been there. My whole lifetime, um.
No, 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 Kent, Kent Country Store was a snowmobile shop.
See, I'm not that, I wasn't here that.
Was.
Dick's Rombo was. Auto repair, so, so it's always been just a mixed match of unregulated and.
Some towns, like, you know, you go to Woodstock, Vermont, you drive through, it's. It's beautiful, and I think a town that has that kind of appeal adds value to everybody.
Absolutely.
This board should have a, an objective. Of over time, creating that kind of a, a plan. Because you know, you have to wait for things to, to happen, but every time you make a decision on like that place over there. Or another one, it has to be consistent with what you want it to create.
And, and, and part of the problem, I think, is that. Lincoln is still small, and there is not enough. Full-time residents or people that visit on a full-time enough basis to support. Regular business year round. It's enough to support it during the spurts of the winter. And maybe during a high period in the summer. But we still, I think retail wise, you will find just a lot of off-season retail that just doesn't support it in that. So that lends itself to doing the best you can with what you got, a lot of times.
I suspect, I, I, that's certainly been the case, I suspect it may be changing.
We have eighteen shops at Lincoln, at the depot, different outlets do it. They all went under two years after we built it. I, the Canadian all the way down through. We made a bookie shop over here, Lincoln Square, I don't feel that a lot.
The what's there?
A bookie shop. No, a bookie.
Like bookmaker?
No, bookmakers, and doing vending and selling.
I mean, that's.
And, you know, one, one of the things I think about Woodstock is, is that's a very pedestrian friendly. Uh, downtown.
Woodstock's got like that, like that storefronts.
People like to go there just to see it.
Right, and, and, you know, one of the problems we have is we have a.
Mill.
Paper mill on one whole side of the street, and that got turned into a plaza mall, I, I mean.
And it's all empty.
But anyway, that, that's, that's a large section of Main Street, that's, that's really unwalkable.
That used to be go, that mill used to go from.
We had the whole, whole mill itself still standing, you know, now we have nice seven-story hotels, I mean, I think the town's going in the right direction.
Yeah. And, a- a- and, and again, it's, beauty is in the eye's beholder, you know, when I look at those storage containers. They're odd, but I also think that if you put, uh, the New England style roof on them, it's kind of a cool blend of. You know, modern, edgy, and New England that fits in with the eclectic mix of what we got.
I think if he does it in his energy-saving and green. Or green-based, energy-saving solar, making it, doing things to incorporate some of that, I think that might be. You know, I mean, just like those little log cabins up here, you know, I look those, to me, those. You go to bed, but then, but then you look at him, the guy's done a good job, cause he's got the solo panels on him, he calls it the Lincoln Law Home, I mean, so, I mean, so.
That's a great little place.
I think that's cool. If we, if we did a master plan two years ago. Couple of log cabins on Main Street would not have been in my plan, but then when he came in with this cool little idea, it's like, I liked it.
And when you drive by those little treehouses, oh, I, I drive by, I look at them all the time, and now I think, you know what, tho- those don't look.
They were controversial when they were on. They look, you know, maybe not comparable to the cabins, but I don't think they look bad.
There's a lot of people who just think they're so cute.
And I don't disagree with them, but like I said, for me, it's about people like you. If you live here, it's also about people like me, but people like you, if you live here and, and, and you came in here. And. I still want to hear what you, what you would like to have beside you. I'm also a person who thinks that if I own property, I have to be able to put on what I want, cause this is live free or die. And if I own a property, I want you to tell me what I can have on it, so it's kind of a toss-up in between two. You know, i- if you own your own property, you really, we live in a live-free diet state.
And that's, that to me is also a, an influence on how I think, is that, you know, it's my property, I think I can do what I want. But I think that, like, like with the Hampton Inn, okay? For us to say, no, we don't want another inn, well, I don't want another inn, but it's their property. Can they, can they put in, um, nice siding, can they put in some faux rock granite looking? Something, can they put on a roof to make it New England, okay, instead of what Cal talked about, that, that hospital-looking square box. That they originally came in with.
Huge pane windows.
Yeah, and, and it was, it was, I mean, you know, if you don't like this one, you would have hated, but it's the original plant, so, so, I mean, we do have an effect on it.
This was the third plane it came in with.
Yeah, but like, he showed us several, several, he showed us several iterations and we voted, you know, we.
We, we did, because I remember, whatever one you liked is the one I hated and vice versa, and, and not that he's right or I'm right, it's just that.
We didn't like some of the things there, and he was agreeing to make changes on, on this one, it was just let it sell to his property.
He hasn't backed it back, has he?
No. My bad.
He's been doing a, a sewer study and working a cou- a couple of other things.
Okay, so, he leapfrogged over us, went to the state fire marshal's office and applied for a building permit. And so we're now trying to rein in and try and get into what he's supposed to do. I guess I refuse to give him a nine-one-one number because he can't get one till he gets a permit from us. So, anyway, it'll work out, it'll work out.
He didn't approve.
He's got a lot of stuff, oh, this is, I'm talking about over here, the, uh.
The one near Forest Ridge.
What do you think of a fifty-style diner on me?
I was just gonna bring that up.
Would that be cool? It's beautiful. But it's, but it's totally unlike anything else.
Woodstock, Vermont looks like, and it has lots of different kind of buildings. But it's standalone and something. Lots of bricks or, or.
But I think if you went to every, every place you went on vacation, it looked like Woodstock, Vermont, you get kind of tired of it.
But it has more trees, there's more vegetation along Main Street too.
It's a really big problem, we're a mill, it all said. North Woodstock, you know, Lincoln, and North Woodstock, Main Street, it all hopped, it all built, and a lot of the stuff was built in the late eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds. So they had something to work with to convert it to look like a downtown New England town. Lincoln never had that. So the, we are here, you basically starting from scratch. And we only get about a mile down, less than a mile of Main Street or less. Had to make people, and Lincoln probably valued still land, where nobody wants to be as. Up on that Forest Ridge, I mean, back Forest Ridge, it's five hundred acres, block, it has four hundred acres. They don't wanna be, they don't wanna be close to the mountain, I just, I mean, the lobby downtown is so much more valuable here. You know what I'm trying to say? Everybody wants to be in a certain choice that area, which creates a big problem for us. When they build this eight hundred more houses across the river, one, two, three, four more hotels came into Lincoln. We have two lanes coming in, two lanes going out, it's gonna look like, worth the north, worth the North Conway. And the federal mandate and the state regulations for discrimination can't stop. And let me do some kind of an impact. We did stop a group of developers back in the early nineties. They had to redo the infrastructure on their own dollar before they could build. In fact, Brad King was one of them, if you remember. Had to prepare all this, all this leaking source of Route Three and Main Street to get the hookups they wanted.
But they were also given hookups as a, as a compensation for their investments.
Yeah, but at least they did, when they have the town, they have to put money out, you know what I'm saying?
I think I found most developers work with us.
Most of them have.
Well, there's some that've come and gone.
A lot of them have come and gone.
Yeah.
One left me with eighty thousand dollars in debt.
I guess my point would just be then that, I mean, you, you can't have everything be a cookie cutter, look the same. And so I appreciate the idea with some unique ideas coming in and getting approved, but. I think you need to be able to make decisions.
Blend it together.
Based upon what the overall impact is gonna look like and have something that you want it to look like. Uh, there's also the. Some, some of the, um, aesthetics based on what kinds of. Businesses, is it, is it attracting, you know, is a, is a food truck what you wanna be in, you get system Main Street? Or is it, you know, uh, or you want a restaurant kind of facility, if you're, there's. There's things like, what do you want it to be? And I guess what I've heard here was a lack of. A foundation that you make a decision based upon this foundation of principles, of ideals, what you want.
So I mean, I think, my wife makes a comment all the time, she says, Lincoln is so far and. Screwed up when it comes to, we have so many houses and units, living spaces. But, you know, there's not enough restaurants in this town, there's not enough, you know, so she, she likes. Well, but, but, but that's the same thing, that, that there's not enough business to keep a good restaurant busy year around. You know, and that's the problem, and, and that's why I tell them, it's, so when it's really busy, you can't go out, you can't, it just, but.
You need a year-round population, good jobs, et cetera, to support all those restaurants.
You need food trucks to come in when they're busy, and then go away when they're not busy.
And that's where I think the problem is in Lincoln.
I know, I know what you wanna hear, but, but.
We're still, yeah.
That addresses what is a, a big issue, I mean, I don't know if you've gone. Saturday night in February vacation.
And actually, the busiest time, according to the chamber, is July and August, entire year. I don't know if you realize that, except the ski, except the weekends in the ski area.
I realize that, we know that, but.
But it's the years.
He just uses it as an example.
What time was three, we had, north, north Lincoln, we had seven restaurants there. What do we get there now? It didn't have Woodwards.
Yeah.
That is two.
Frenzilons.
Frenzilons, I mean, we're gonna sit down.
Well, in ninety-three, you should go right through there, now they don't.
Yeah, and it's a, the big concept is, like, Price Shop first opened. They were, the first company.
That's another thing, a grocery store.
The big problem with grocery stores is, you know what gross on a grocery store is per year? One half percent of the gross sales.
Profit.
Profit, profit. And when they first opened the grocery store, the first three years they're open, they're running in a bread, except all, all, except for three months a year. You know, they kept on going to the meat department, I don't realize that.
But that's the same thing. You go to a grocery store on a busy weekend and it, either they're full, and you got a line back down one aisle, or there's nothing in it. So I mean, there's, there's some amenities here that just. Lincoln's somewhere between the middle of, I don't know, you know.
And it's doing, walk it all the time.
But I, you know, I just think about restaurants not being able to make money. I, I suspect the restaurants now are making pretty good money.
But the ones that are here, the ones that are here, but if you go there. Where are we at, April? So if you go there in the next, please six weeks, you'll have no problem getting anywhere you want, but after that.
On an annual basis, hmm, most, I would say most restaurants in this town are making decent profit. Okay, but again, you can see that some of them don't appeal to the.
You go into Woodstock.
And, and, like you said, many have gone out of business, but at the same time, many have tried, so it's, it's. Like anything else.
It's where they're located.
It's where they're located, it's their reputation, it's their service.
I think they're kind of, I mean, Lincoln looks like it's a lot of quick.
I mean, yeah.
Not a lot of real. Real comprehensive menus that are there.
I, I think the trend in this country has been more towards, um, pub-style, um. You, you, not, not a dog.
Gas cabin, they call it.
Gas cabin, thank you. Okay, the Applebee's, the. Chili's, and, and even the non-granded, non-franchised ones are, are following that.
So one, what was one down by Dunkin' Donuts, that used to be.
Seven Seas.
Seven Seas, what was it before that?
Both leave Lincoln.
I, I suspect the burger place and Chipsy Cafe all do pretty well.
Yeah.
Because they have a nice location on, on Main Street or near Main Street, and people go there.
Oh, I think it's a concept too.
You'll see it during the slow period, you won't see some of the. Stat that you see during the high period of summer in winter, cause they, they get laid off, they, they downsize a little bit, stuff like that, so.
Anyway.
Yeah.
To the meeting, so.
It, it's nice to hear, see somebody come in, I think, yeah.
Yep, you're welcome to come on the meeting, whether, whether you're a butter or not.
Why, yeah, it's a tip of butter to see the town.
Yeah, we know that. But it's get the notice, so.
Right, but everybody has, you know, cares about what it looks. I mean, it's a tip of people that live next to it. So, which has some, maybe, you know, that, again, in terms of noticing, notices to people. I don't know, just sending it to the people that are but next, right next to them, is sufficient to get an opinion about what should.
Well, that's what we're required to do, but it's on our website, I mean, it's on, it's posted in public places as well.
And it's running the newspaper.
Yeah.
It's newspaper.
But I mean, the agendas are all posted on our website.
You know, just planting and zoning and the worst like.
That's, that's what I do.
That's how I got here, scared of reading them.
And, and all of that, I appreciate you coming in, but I also wanted to say that, that I appreciate the conversation we had at the last election. And as a result of that, not just you, but primarily you, and a couple of other people that I talked to that day. The the selectmen are now um getting on the website, I don't know if it's up yet, it's not on the mobile, I just checked it, but um kind of a summary of the major things going on in town to make people aware. So it talks about the water tank, it talks about the police station, it talks about the skateboard park, a few other.
That's great.
Because you're right, if if you ask me any of any of those things, I could tell you. But you don't even know to ask because they're not out there, unless you read agendas, which not no one typically does. So there's there's a section. There's a section on the website that's kind of like the highlight topics, um I don't know if it's live yet, but. So thank you.
Just because it's getting information to people so that it's in their face almost, not just acceptable.
Yeah.
I mean, they get comments all the time. Construction of the building and where where the town is going, but I'm just like, we need.
Disagree with him, we can't just simply stop.
Biggest problem is, most of the come forget, for people that are full-time residents, the local residents who have it speak up, voice one way or the other, you ever notice that? How many local residents we have came in listening? You live in town full-time or you're just?
Full-time.
But you, okay, you you came in, listen, but half the people live up here, but you have a notice or meeting, they don't even bother showing up. That's after after the, then they complain after it's approved. How can you do this? Why don't you come up and speak up? Nobody will, they don't wanna take the notice out.
I I've come in, that's, I I think you're absolutely right, but it's also that if you are told what's going on, that there is something happening, that you have an opportunity to talk. Then you might get better at that, it's not that you're gonna get everybody's.
I've even gone door to door about fifty, sixty people, knocking the door, inviting them to come, how many people show up? I'm not saying, you don't get me wrong, but you're here to not, you know, find the problem.
I'll bet you the sixty people, fifty-nine, fifty-nine will say, yeah, I'll be there.
It's like it's those Asian memes.
Okay, enough for you.
You can stay, we're only gonna be here a few more minutes.
Yes, thanks for coming in, all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Woodstock Planning Board.
Okay, so I just wanted to, it just came in, I just want to let you know, this is their you know, uh development of regional impact, so they're notifying us, we're the funding community. And I wanted to tell you where, um I did look up, all I can say is that we we get what we pay for with our tax maps, our tax maps are a thousand times better than Woodstock. Um but anyway, it is when you're going up Lost River, uh by Ross River and there is a split between um Route one eighteen and one twelve. Okay, it's um it's the second or third road on the right and it is the last lot up on the hill.
Go going as one twelve or one eighteen?
Going uh one twelve. Okay, so I have.
Going the farm road.
Visual aids. The parcel is owned by Jeffrey, Nancy and Brendan Ingles.
Oh, there you go.
But they're on one eighteen.
This is a bacon lot.
Yeah.
This is a bacon lot that they bought. Okay, so um, I don't know, you can see, I'll bring it now.
Do you have a road?
Okay, yes. Okay, so um this is, this is me driving home, uh Lost River.
Okay, you can buy one eighteen.
This is where the intersection one eighteen is, and then there's one road, two road, and this is whatever the main. And it's all the way up here.
Also, that won't be.
It's up on, so it's up on the right, so you probably, um we're right here. So I try to.
Right, you know where this is.
Yeah. The um the building, uh the storage.
The storage containers are up here and up at the end of this loop, like several of these.
There's one come right off the road there too, there's two storage containers.
Yeah, you're right.
And I think this one, is this Fadden's property?
I think so.
So if this is Fadden's property, it must be up by the old camp, he must have bought it. At Fadden owned that, that's a pretty big piece, I think Fadden might be.
Okay, but they're. Are they chunking off a piece?
It must have chunked off a piece.
Well, it's not that big, that lot is not that big, it looks big there, but.
Looks like they took one little piece out of this, if this was lot seven.
Right.
It took one little piece out here and then took one little piece out here.
Yeah.
It's a hundred, it's a hundred and seventy-six feet, hundred and eighty-five inches, yeah, it's a big one.
And that goes up, that that's going uphill.
That's why I said it was bad, it's because it's.
That's the old sugar bush.
Yep, that's why I think it is.
But I did notice it didn't put any blue.
Okay, it's it's five point zero four acres. And it used to belong to Nancy Simmons and then it belonged to John Walker Kelly. And who was a business associate of Nancy and Simmons. And then they sold it to the Ingles. And they have a P O box in North Woodstock, I don't know.
If you come up this road, they live. Yeah, it's it's up beyond this though.
It'll be up there.
Maybe it's maybe it's that one.
I might, it it might be right around in here.
That was up front, but anyway, it's it's up one eighteen on the left.
Good luck, Tom, don't fight it, because I'm never, I'll never win.
Maybe just misspelled, it said bloom, I'm gonna call me to the subdivision application.
I think it's probably just a side plan. I'm just letting you know, if you want about the hearing, you can.
Yeah, alright, uh does anyone have anything else?
Yes, while we're here.
Yeah.
Can I nominate you as chair again?
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay.
But we, aren't we supposed to do that?
Yeah, we should do it every town meeting, alright.
Got a motion in the second?
Alright. Any further discussion? Let's do the vice chair first, do the chair first. Alright, all in favor? Aye, anyone opposed?
Well.
Alright, uh is there a nomination for vice chair?
I'll nominate myself.
Joe's gonna nominate himself?
Any discussion, all in favor?
We don't need a secretary anymore, do we?
So we got that over with.
No one has items.
Go ahead.
Make your motion, Jerry.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.